There is a need for a special or an executive session at this time. Under Colorado Revised Section 24-6-402, Pimpf C's 4, Pimpf C's B. Legal advice board to conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters. Colorado Revised Statutes 24-6-402, Pimpf C's 4, E. Contract negotiation board to discuss matters subject to negotiation. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Is there a discussion? There is a need to amend the agenda this evening to remove item 2.
No.
Was there one on the board? Guess I read it.
He read it.
I read it.
He read it.
It will be important.
Yeah, he did.
I read the two that are on there. That's all right, I'll fire you next time. All right, was there a discussion? Motion was made. Second. So discussion. All right, Monica, roll call please.
Hi.
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 Hi. We will now adjourn to executive session at 5:19. There's a need for a steady session at this time to discuss hyper V replacement. So I'm going to put Ms. Hernandez on the clock here and hopefully you can do it in, Mr. Dr. Abrego says you can do it in 10 minutes. Otherwise we deduct your pay.
Very good. Good evening, President Rola, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Abrego, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. This evening, I would like to take us back in time quickly to about a year ago when the Board of Education asked educational leaders at the time, what are the needs of the district? And technology services is one of the top of that list. And at that time, you requested an overview of what are the top needs for technology. You identified Wi-Fi, bandwidth, Google apps for educators, as well as a hyper V solution. And at the time, with the allocated funds that we were given for special projects, we took care of those first four needs. And we tabled the hyper V solution until we had the right personnel in place and had done an appropriate amount of research to justify spending $400,000 on this equipment for the district. So what we have for you this evening, you will find a superintendent's recommendation toward the end of your packet that gives your approval to spend the amount of money up to $400,000 on the hyper V solution. I've asked Brandon Steely, the manager of Technology Services, to present a brief overview of what that amount covers and how it supports the district moving forward, as well as underscores the urgency of this particular purchase.
President Rola, distinguished members of the board, Superintendent Abrego, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. We're going to discuss our hyper V replacement. So really quickly, I want to cover what hyper V is. Hyper V is essentially a server and workstation virtualization platform that allows us to take multiple physical pieces of hardware, virtualize them, and then put them on shared hardware. The original purchase was completed in May of 2011, was intended to last about five years. At the time, the district had no virtualization support, and so we had to make an educated guess on sizing. As technology services took on more responsibilities and more roles, we ran into basically our growth rate exceeding our expectations. We have limited storage remaining, we're oversubscribed on CPU, we're oversubscribed on memory, and we're hitting our I/O and throughput limitations. Also, as a consequence of this, the original plan was for ACHS to be our disaster recovery site. That site is no longer capable of handling that recovery. Really quickly, this is our current environment. It consists of three nodes, Dell R715s with two AMD 12-core processors, 256 gigs of RAM, and two operating system hard drives. They're connected to Dell 6248 switches, which provide one gig of throughput from each server. And then we have five equal logic storage arrays that provide roughly 38 terabytes of storage. Thirty-five terabytes are in use. The three remaining terabytes are a little bit too slow to support virtualization. We have a similar environment at the high school. However, those servers run about half of the amount of memory. We do have more storage, but those storage arrays are all slower, so they are not capable of supporting our current environment. What this environment supports, and I'm going to read from the slides, active directory sync services to Office 365 and Google, Apple Track employee authentication, antivirus, network monitoring, call monitoring, the Destiny Library System, network connectivity services, Windows licensing, file storage for users and department shares, and multiple other things. Nutrition services, MCS software, server monitoring, web filtering for Chromebooks, paper vision document management system for multiple departments, print, scan, and fax for the entire department, or the entire district, the LEO finance service, which were not migrated to the new system, software and OS deployment services, help desk for technology and student services, the time card reporting for the service center, wireless infrastructure monitoring and connectivity, the Adams 14 website, and multiple other support systems. Our goals are to replace the current system. We will, we do intend to reutilize some of that equipment in non-critical areas, development, you know, web development, testing. We currently test in production, and we would like to no longer have to do that. We also want to stress the fact that as this equipment ages, the meantime between failure has been decreasing, and our chances for a long-term outage have increased as that goes on. Our goal is to provide a solution for the next five years, basically expanding our current compute and storage resources, and then providing enough room for growth. We also want to improve our backup and recovery, so you will see a line item for Veeam backup. We intend to utilize Azure Cloud services as those resources become logical to switch to. Generally, that would be cold storage, longer-term archiving. And our goal is also to try and recruit, improve our recovery point and our recovery time objectives. Recovery point being how much data we've lost between someone saving something and a failure, and the recovery time is how many days does it take for us to get back if this building disappeared? The new infrastructure is center-pointed by what's an HP HC250. It's a hyper-converged four-node chassis. Each node within this chassis contains two Intel, 14-core processors, 512 gigs of RAM, and 7.3 terabytes of usable storage. They'll be connected with HP Flex Fabric 5740 gig stacking switches. Because I wanted you to see that you're actually buying a piece of hardware, not just a graph, this is what an HC250 looks like. The unit itself is about three and a half inches tall. The entire front of it is basically hard drives, and then on the backside, you can see each individual node. The benefits to this new infrastructure is it would essentially provide us consolidation of the multiple units that we currently have into a single chassis for ease of management, adds an additional node, which would bring our cluster up to four nodes, 112 cores versus the 72 that we currently have, doubles the amount of memory we have per node, takes us from two ter, or to two terabytes from 756 gigs that we currently have. The storage within the chassis is the equivalent, almost the equivalent of our current capacity, and all of that is solid state, so that solves our I/O issue. And then between the chassis and the switches is 10 gig fiber, and that essentially provides 10, 10 times the current throughput that we have. We're looking at additional flexible storage, things like file shares, department shares, with roughly about 45 terabytes of raw capacity, and then again, the Veeam backup solution with five years of support there. This is what the replacement environment would look like. Bounce through that quickly. We will also duplicate this environment at ACHS for disaster recovery. So if there's an issue at this building, and it looks like this building's going to be out of commission for a long time, we would have the opportunity to spin things up over at the high school. As Teresa mentioned, you'll see a superintendent's rec this evening for $400,000. This is the purchase price breakdown that we currently have. There are one or two items that we anticipate will need to pick up along the way. So we submitted for 400. The actual current package price is $363,080.28. This is all covered with a five-year warranty and five years' worth of support. And I know that was really fast, so if you have questions, I'd love to hear them.
I have a question for you. So if this is approved, is it going to cover all our Chromebooks in the next couple of years as we bring on more Chromebooks and more schools, more grades? Is it going to be able to handle all that?
The investment that we've made over the past year or two, as far as the wireless infrastructure and various other components, hardware switching upgrades, really is the core of what would support the Chromebook investment. This investment covers all of the things that happen behind the scenes, whether it's, you know, purchasing lunches, all of those kinds of events. So closely related, but not necessarily reliant.
Teresa, was a timeframe if this gets approved for this replacement?
So we will have to finish making our purchase, and then when the hardware arrives, then we'll be installing it as we are moving into the school year. So this is all happens virtually, as well as in the server room as well, and it happens as things are moving forward. So likely, we'd want to do as much as we could during the summer, because we'll be taking down applications and bringing applications up, and we absolutely cannot impact the classrooms. For example, HR would be very unhappy with us if we did it right now during hiring season, because the Apple Track system they utilize sits on this platform.
Is your staff going to handle the install?
Most of it.
Because here's the, here's the question that's coming, is we have all these Chromebooks and all these computers that we have to get out that we haven't got out yet, and how is your staff going to handle that, plus this upgrade?
So I can speak to that. We, as part of the, as part of the HC250 platform, being that it's a hyper-converged platform, the actual installation, the racking of the system, the initial spin-up is all supported by the vendor. So as we migrate information from point A to point B, that's on us. Those are separate resources within our department, so our systems administrator, myself, and our network administrator will handle the bulk of the workload for this environment. The PC technicians, the support people are the ones that will handle the primary of the Chromebook deployment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I guess, thank you.
Thank you.
Just did it in 10 minutes, good job. Okay, before we get started, anybody have to go anywhere? Are we all okay? Call this meeting to order on April 11th at... At this time, I'd like you to rise for the pledge allegiance. Also, a moment of silence, as last week, we lost a former teacher, former director, and former assistant principal at Adams City High School, who I think worked in the district for over 30 years, and that's Mr. Carol Hart, passed away, heart attack, so.
Also, Denise Van Meter, she was the administrator assistant at Lester Arnold.
Wow, she's a young lady.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Do we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Mr. Dreiling?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes on March 14, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Hi.
Hi.
Mrs. Quintana?
Hi.
Mr. Rola?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Need a motion for the approval of March 17, 2017.
So moved.
Minutes. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Hi.
Mr. Dreiling?
Hi.
Mrs. Quintana?
Hi.
Mr. Rola?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, before, I need a motion to amend the agenda on two items.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All right, the two items are, there is a need to amend the agenda this evening to remove item 2.6 regarding relay travel due to a grant pending and a memorandum of understanding with relay penalty pending approval. Also, there is an amendment to the agenda to remove the first appointee from the administrative under personnel action. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion on either? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Mr. Archuleta?
Hi.
Mr. Dreiling?
Hi.
Mrs. Quintana?
Hi.
Mr. Rola?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Now, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Hi.
Mr. Dreiling?
Hi.
Mrs. Quintana?
Hi.
Mr. Rola?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas?
Hi.
Moving on to recognition and celebrations. Dr. Jay?
Yes, we have the principal of DuPont Elementary, who is going to highlight three programs from your school, correct? Pat, if you would come up, please.
Thank you, Dr. Abrego. Good evening, President Rola, distinguished board members, Dr. Abrego, and the Adams 14 community. I guess some would say this is DuPont night at the board meeting. It's an exciting night for me to be able to come forward and recognize three different strands of support for the students at DuPont Elementary School. First, DuPont Elementary School would like to recognize the hours of planning and thoughtful delivery of instruction that our bilinguacy team provides every day. Their professionalism and high expectations have created an atmosphere of academic and linguistic excellence that supports all students in the bilinguacy strand. It is an honor this evening to recognize Mari Fernandez, kindergarten teacher. Come on up. Yvonne Braun, kindergarten teacher. Nancy Carbehall Tinsman, first grade teacher. Arturo Esparza, second grade teacher. And Courtney Ranhel, English Language Development Coach.
Is Cameron here to take pictures?
Ladies, would you like to say something to the Adams 14 community before we get started with pictures?
This is less about me as a coach and more about our wonderful bilingual teachers. The amount of work it takes to be a bilinguacy teacher is incredible. Not only do you have to plan instruction in the native language, Spanish, but you have to think about the scaffolds and supports in English, so I just want to say what an honor it's been to work alongside these ladies, and Arturo and Nancy could not be here, but we have an exceptional bilingual team here at DuPont.
The second recognition this evening goes out to one of our longtime community members, and that is Jayhawk Trailers. One of the highlights of any high school experience is the support and recognition for the local football team and the pride that comes from the entire school community during the Homecoming Day Parade. DuPont Elementary School wants to recognize Jayhawk Trailers this evening for their generous donation of the use of several trailers to use for the mini floats that make the Homecoming Day Parade memorable for students and the entire community. It is an honor this evening to be able to recognize Shannon and Aaron Zierbierski from Jayhawk Trailers. I don't think they were able to make it tonight, but they donated nine, is it nine trailers? Nine trailers to Adams 14 schools, so that every school could have a homecoming float for the Homecoming Day Parade. So I think it's a big recognition.
I would just like to add that Jay's has been doing it, not just this year, but they have been doing it, and I've been out of teaching for I don't know how many number of years, but they were doing it way before I started teaching. So they have always contributed to our school district. They're always there to help us, and I believe they're both graduates of Adams City High School.
So a very big part of our community. And finally, it is my pleasure and my honor this evening to recognize the Integer Group. A couple of months ago, I received an email, and that started a journey for DuPont Elementary School that was meant to recognize one teacher in particular. The process of completing the video that is now on Facebook and YouTube and recognizes all school employees is complete, but the positive impact left on DuPont by the Integer Group has just begun. The Integer Group is the ad agency that worked with the school to recognize the teacher, Sarah Van Alken, and in the process, recognized all educators across the country. They collected bags and bags and bags of clothing, shoes, winter boots, hats, gloves, backpacks, and school supplies that will support students way into next year. It was amazing the day that they brought it by the school, because I just kept thinking they're bringing more in, and they're bringing more in to support our students. So the Integer Group is an example of a village helping to raise a child, and it is a privilege to recognize their contributions to our community. Will Teresa Lopez, Chrissy Porter, Ryan Davis, and Erin Bonsal, please come forward?
Oh, thank you so much, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to work with all of you.
Is someone going to say something?
I know, I just left them up there. I don't know, Erin, would you like to come and just talk briefly about the project?
Sure, and then I'll let Chrissy talk about the other part of the donation, because she took full lead for that. So I am the producer of Integer Group that started this email chain with Ms. Almeida, and probably bothered her for weeks on end, but it was a pleasure and a privilege for us to be able to come into DuPont and be able to shoot film a wonderful teacher, as well as get to meet all the other wonderful educators and support staff that go around what makes DuPont DuPont, and why all the children there should be having the best experience they have, and how happy they are. So thank you for letting us invade your world. I know that you rocked our world, so.
I just want to say thank you for letting us be involved with your school. It was so much fun working on the video, and as soon as we heard from Sarah that there are a lot of students who didn't have the things they needed to go to school and do their job for the day, we just couldn't let that sit, and we needed to do something more. So I'm glad we were able to provide something, and I know it's never enough, and there's always more needed, but I'm glad that we were able to do something for you. And thank you so much for letting us be a part of your guys' lives. It was really fun, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board would like to go down there, congratulate them, and then take a picture. See if Timmy don't break the camera.
I'll let you go. This chair.
Have your spouses here.
Oh, you want us in the middle?
If your spouse is here, you can.
No, we just like that. They don't get any recognition.
I plan on making that part of the DuPont presentation. It is a true testament to the work that educators and the family and the community do for all of the students in Adams 14. So thank you for the ability to recognize these individuals this evening, and I will step away.
Is that it, or is there?
Yes, that's it.
Moving on now to audience comments. As we move on to audience comments, please remember to state your name. You have three minutes to speak. No citing of time between speakers will be allowed, for permitted. All comments need to be district-related. Your comments can suggest improvements, but should be a productive. You can provide written statements to the board for review. The president can recognize a board member or the superintendent to respond to questions to clarify a district's position. First individual will be Barb McDowell.
No address, right. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. Good evening, President Rola, Superintendent Abrego, members of the board. I'm here tonight to talk about a few things. One is, we, the Classroom Teachers Association conducted a survey, Culture and Climate Survey this year. Every two years, Colorado Teaching Empowering Leading and Learning was presented by the State of Colorado in conjunction with Colorado Department of Education and Colorado Education Association, and I believe CASB as well. And this year, they did not, this was the year it should have been done, this was the two-year rotation, they didn't do one, so we conducted it. We pulled, because it's a very lengthy survey, we pulled some of the most pertinent questions out of there and presented it to staff, certified staff, and I have copies of it I would like to give to you. But because I'm almost out of time, I do, I will like to ask permission to give it to you at the end, but it is broke up into several different categories, time and resources, the school culture and climate, school leadership, district leadership, professional learning... the school culture and climate, school leadership, district leadership, professional learning curriculum. It also has comments, and it is also broken down by sites. If you would like to learn more about it and would like to hear, I would love to sit down with you if you would like to meet with me, and I can break it down even further for you. The other thing I'm here to talk about is, as an ELD teacher, as well as the Classroom Teachers Association president, and that is, the middle schools are wanting to change ELD from a core subject to an elective subject, which means any child who is receiving English Language Development would be losing one elective and getting a second elective. So in other words, if you're a white child and you speak only English, you get two electives; and if you're a child of color and you speak a language other than English, you get only one. I have my colleague over here as well who would be speaking to it. The English Language Development Department has also put out the recommendation to keep this in the core so our children are not being discriminated against, and so I just want to put onto that, that it isn't fair to our kids. Secondly, in addition to that point is, according to the Office of Silver Rights, you cannot discriminate against a child based on their language, English language proficiency. So if they get only one elective and all other children, meaning white children, get two electives, we are discriminating against them based on their language proficiency. So that is my recommendation, that we keep it the way it is. Now, may I step forward and hand you the survey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I said, I can get it to broken down by school if you'd like to meet.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Crystal?
Yeah. I think so.
Jessica. Excuse me, were you going to?
I didn't make it in time, so I'll wait.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
We'll ask you questions afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm sad, but you need to know.
The next one is Gier Moserna.
Gier Moserna, 14122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado 8022. Congratulations on the parent academy that's coming up. That's great. I'm here because of the distance, an ordinance that the city is working on, and it concerns liquor and along with marijuana. They are trying to diminish the distance from a school that these places can be set up for business. We worked hard, let's say thirty, thirty-five years ago, to eliminate some of the things that were happening here because of our children. The driving drunk and fights and all that type of stuff, and the bad example that was there with some of these places, taverns and all this type of stuff. They were too close to our schools. Now, the city is having discussion this coming Monday, and they've already had three, on bringing in marijuana, okay, into, and they're looking at bringing them closer to a school building. Everything that we have talked about here tonight and celebrated is about kids. Well, kids don't need that example, and you as a board have that responsibility of keeping whatever comes with marijuana, our children, safe. The closer these places are to a school building, whether it's for pleasure, okay, or other things, it brings in a lot of negative to our kids. All the efforts that you put for, to the teacher, to administrators, sometimes goes down the drain, because if it's illegal to drive a car while intoxicated, it should also be illegal for children to come to the school on a marijuana high, simply because sometimes parents have a tendency of not locking their stuff up. And teachers and the district, when they take tests or whatever, bear the results of that. I'm asking you to write a letter to the city council and object to this. It's give our kids a fair chance. When we were on the board, Dave, and you were a teacher, you know the consequence of all of this when it comes to kids doing what kids will do, and that's experiment. But when you mix marijuana, beer, and all these pills that are coming up now, and they're everywhere, we have to protect the teachers as well as the district, but most important, the children, so that they can be successful in the programs that you are trying to implement. Let the city council know that there's a concern over this, and to maintain the distance that's already there. That's all I ask, and not for my benefit, but for our children's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Bauer or Barber?
directors. I'm here today on behalf of Monaco Elementary School. We need to look in the safety of our children, whether it's dropping them off at schools in the morning, in the afternoon, picking them up, whether it's on our crosswalks, our children being hit by cars, nothing being addressed about it. None of the follow-up stuff that happened should have happened. When we go to our principals, we're getting brushed aside. We're getting told, "Go to the district," by everyone we talk to. So if our voices are going to go unheard, we need to be heard. Our students need to be heard. It's our kids' futures that are in the lives of your teachers' hands. In the mornings, when it's cold outside, our kids are sitting outside after the bells ring, both bells go by, some of the teachers don't open the doors because they're not in there. They're somewhere else. If parents are in and they're in the classrooms with the kids and there's no teachers in there, they go to open the doors, they get reprimanded for opening the doors to the kids that are waiting outside, and those kids have to go get tardy passes. I don't believe that that's fair because they're missing out on their time where they could be eating breakfast, getting warm, and all of that as well. Also, when we address issues about our principals and them not following through with steps that they should be, or bringing us attention like matters that you guys discuss, we're kind of in the dark with what all you guys discuss. We know how much money we have for the following year coming up, but any of the other issues you guys have brought up, it has never been brought to our attention. So we would really like someone, you guys, to come and talk to our parents, talk to our students, ask them how they feel about their safety. If you guys have a crosswalk class that you guys can offer to the parents that maybe can volunteer either before school, after school, we're willing to do that. You know, we have a PTO, we all try to do our best with the community, with the school. We have other people that can probably volunteer, but we really would like your guys' assistance. And thank you again for your time.
Just a moment, I got a question. Just, Mr. Archuleta, can you come up, please? Does Monaco have a back meetings at their school?
Every school's supposed to have a back, yes.
So does Monaco have one? Not does every school have one, suppose that one, does Monaco have one every month?
I don't see the principal here who would be able to answer that better than I.
Can that question be a follow-up to the BOE? And can we get an update? What was the last back meetings minutes for their school for the last, since school started in September? I'd like to see that furnished to the BOE, their minutes for each month. Also, I'd like to see who's sitting on their board, too. Provide that to the board. Thank you.
Next will be Crystal Lopez.
My name is Crystal Lopez. Good evening, board members, president, and Dr. Archuleta, superintendent. Us parents at Monaco Elementary are very concerned at how the school is being ran. We are extremely upset about the turnaround rate that we have with our teachers. Last year, a dozen or more teachers did not return, and this year is going to be the same thing. Mr. Gerson is letting go of teachers who actually make a difference in the children's lives. One of those teachers that's getting let go is one of my child's teachers, and she's helped my daughter with more confidence with her reading. She don't cry or anything like that anymore like how she used to within the past couple of years. She's got more confidence. Our kids cannot grow and excel in an environment that does not have stability. These past two years, parents have came less and less and volunteered at our school, and it's because of our principal. He's not welcoming, the parents don't feel welcomed, so they don't want to come and they don't want to volunteer. We've came to him with issues and they don't get resolved. We've told him numerous times, like Christine said, about the gate being open for the past two years prior to the kids getting hit by the car. And since the accidents happened, I myself has gone in to the office and has said, "Okay, those gates are open, they need to get locked." We feel that Mr. Gerson does not have the best interest of our students when making decisions about the school. He has meetings that began when the bell rings, okay, after the bell rings. That's why the kids are being left outside, because he has these teachers in meetings. There's no other teachers in the classroom to let the students in. He's taken valuable education time having those meetings like that in the mornings with the teachers away from our students. Those are only some of the concerns that us teachers or us parents have with our school. I am requesting that if you, the board members, could please go to our school, go interview our teachers, and see like how they feel working with our principal, because there's more that are leaving this school year because of Mr. Gerson. And the ones that's left in the past, they told me they left because of Mr. Gerson. So I was just requesting if you guys could please go and do an interview at Monaco with our teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up, because we really welcome you to come to the board or to make a call, because Dr. Jay will get back with you. You know, I don't want any principal to ever intimidate you. If he's not responding, you need to come up here.
Okay.
You really do.
All right, thank you.
Because that's why we're here.
That's why, this is my first meeting that I've came to, so, and I'm hoping that I can get you guys to come.
And I believe Dr. Jay will look into that.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next person is Jessica Molinaro. Did I pronounce it wrong, or?
Jessica Marillo, I'm here on behalf of Monaco. I'm here to basically share my concerns about the safety for special needs children at Monaco and all the other children as well. As other parents already have said about the kids being left outside and stuff, I've had the actual principal yell at me for letting kids in, and I don't feel as a parent that these children should be out there with no staff supervision, seeing that anything could happen to them while they're outside alone before, after the bell rings. And when I was told from Gerson, his excuse was that, of course, the teachers are in meetings and that it only happens once a month, but this is now the second time within the last two weeks that there has been no teacher in the classroom. I've also as well seen physical stuff that probably other parents would be really upset about if they were to hear that it happened to their child. It's actually, I mean, there's cameras in the hallway, it's visible, if you guys were to go back and look on it. I've actually seen physically with teachers, or I don't know if they were teachers or if they were actual like parents or what they are, holding a child by their arms, carrying him through the hallway, and the child did not look very pleased with it, and I don't feel that that's very safe for children there in the school to actually watch this go on and to know that the teachers are being like this with the children there at Monaco. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that brings a conclusion to audience comments. Moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Abrego.
Yes, we have three. Our first one is going to be a presentation by our teachers of English to speakers of other languages, and they're going to give us information on their overnight professional development presentation.
Good evening, members of, or President Rola, members of the board, Dr. Abrego. Unfortunately, Blake Pendergrass, who attended the TESL conference in Seattle, Washington, was unable to be here because he's teaching right now, so we decided to do, to put forward the slides based on what he obtained at the conference, and then we videotaped his presentation so we can limit it to five minutes. So Monica, can you please play the video? Thank you.
Hello, Lord of Education. My name is Blake Pendergrass. I am an instructor with the Adult Learning Center. I teach ESL level one, two, three, five, and also citizenship class. And I've done with that program for not quite three years, I think three years in August. And two weeks ago, the week before surgery, I had the opportunity to go to Seattle, and it was for the TESL convention, both national and international convention. And I'm just going to give like a brief presentation about some of my takeaways and some of the stuff that I can apply to my classrooms. Okay, so it was a great conference, there was probably a thousand people, so I kind of pick and choose the sessions that I went to, and I kind of focused on doing practical sessions, doing sessions that I could apply to my classroom. So the biggest takeaway was attending these sessions, I focused on practical skills. I went to quite a few pronunciation skills, it's one of the things that I wanted to focus on. So I went to like an academic presentation about teaching pronunciation, I went to some practical ones about using haptic techniques, which I wasn't aware of, which is sort of like, they use example of a rubber band and using like kinetic activities to reinforce vowel sounds. So the example, one of the examples was like what long vowels you have students stretch out, like banana, so using different kinetic tools to teach pronunciation. Also, you have a kazoo, I have an example of using kazoo's to do pronunciation. I've got some videos as well, some pronunciation charts, so these are obviously like samples of things that the program can use to help students with pronunciation. Another thing that I thought was really interesting, I use a lot of videos, I show a lot of like YouTube videos that have reality where people see actual language being used in real context. And there's a site called HeadPuzzle, which is a free site, which actually allows teachers to integrate YouTube videos to find online and type in like either subtitles or like teaching points or pretty much anything that you want into a, into I guess a free software, HeadPuzzle, which I thought was really good, which I'll use. We went to a workshop that was helpful about increasing student interaction by asking open-handed questions, having courses to interact with each other, and dialogue, and debate, and in a sort of like a conversation workshop. Went to a session about Jigsaw reading activities. Went to a session about Jigsaw reading activities, which was really interesting. It's Jigsaw is when you take a, like a pizza pack, take a story and you cut it up into different parts and you have groups become experts in a particular part. And then teach other students about the part that they read and then you have a comprehensive understanding as a class, which I thought was a good, a good idea. We do a lot of readings in our classes. Um, so I'm going to try that in, in our class with a lot of reading activities, chop it up. Let's see, and another interesting opportunity I had under BOA, under the new grant, which hopefully we'll be finding out maybe again, there's a whole new requirement about having workplace, um, workplace goals and skills as a part of our curriculum. So I had the opportunity to talk with Oxford University Press, which is the publisher of the book that we're currently using now. And I've got a look at like an advanced copy of the text that they are using that integrates all of the, all of the standards that the federal government is putting into the, into the new legislation. So we're going to copy that, which is really crucial, because the books that we're using now are aligned to the old standards. This will be aligned to the new standards, so it'll be a really good tool for us to have, have a look that obviously will help us meet those standards. That's sort of the highlight and appreciate the opportunity and thank you.
So adult education that we are, we have a limited amount of, you know, professional development opportunities in the metro area. So one of the things that we're working on across the metro area is now looking at how do we do PD mapping? So essentially, as directors, we're working with other adult education directors to map out what are the professional development opportunities that exist in the metro area and be able to send our teachers to those professional development opportunities as well as hosting them here in our district as well. So one of the big takeaways for Blake is we're going to work on having him actually present at one of the activities that we have here in our district to present that out to more instructors. So even though we have limited opportunities, we're going to bring that expertise back to the local community and try to share out to enhance programming across our district and other programs that are offering adult education services. Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, we have a second presentation. It's going to be a presentation by DAC.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Brago, distinguished members of the board and President Rola. Uh, my name is Isabel Garcia and I am the DAC president, chair. On March 6th, 2017, the, at DAC, we had table discussions regarding recommendations to its local school board, priorities for spending school district money and, um, consult with all required stakeholders regarding federal funding and activities. Now, I would like, before I start this, I would like to see if I can come forward and give a copy.
Thank you. Thank you.
So at that DAC meeting, we had table discussions. We can, the DAC committee came up with six categories. So the first category is technology. The recommendation is for digital books in library and classrooms, more Chromebooks. Second category is training, parent enrichment in how to help students succeed. Professional development training for teachers and parents. The third is staffing, how do we keep our class size small, and additional support staff. Fourth is before and after school activities, after school sports, games, rec center activities, to tutoring, homework and reading, storytellers for story nights, and then gardening grants. Fifth is academics, more GT support, consistent curriculum in instruction in ELA, math and social emotional, educational field trips, curricular resources like textbooks. And then the last category was school repairs. And it's just the school repairs in general for, throughout our district. Uh, those are the recommendations that DAC has for the school board for our coming up 2017, 2018 school year. Thank you for your time and do you have any questions?
Uh, I do.
Yes.
It's not concerning this, but I'm just concerned in your overall DAC compared to last year when we were meeting just every, once every quarter to once a month, which did you feel worked a lot better?
So I can answer that as a parent, or as a DAC chair. So as a parent, um, we live, lead really busy lives. There is a lot of stuff going on at schools and, which is great, because that's what we want. We want after school events for our, and so sometimes it was really hard to pick and choose whether if I had a DAC meeting or an event at my son's school. So I, as a parent, I really did like every quarter, really worked. And it's a lot, you get a lot more, more information than if you meet every month. But I'm not sure if that's, like, by the law, if we have to meet every month or not. Um, as a DAC chair, I really didn't see, you know, difference between, in attendance wise, the difference between last year and this year. I think we still kind of had the same amount of participation from families.
Is there any way to do a survey with the parents?
We do have one more DAC meeting, so we can definitely, um, we can definitely do that. We can present that to, um, our, the DAC at our last DAC meeting and create a survey, whether if they prefer every quarter or monthly.
That sounds good.
Yes.
Appreciate if you get that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more, Mr. Rola. We have the preschool. The scoop.
All right. Good evening. My name is Robert Frantamalan. I'm the Director of Student Services. And one of the divisions that I oversee is early childhood. So I'm going to give you an overview of early childhood in Adams 14 School District. Now, the, and the agenda, it kind of mentioned three schools, but we're really going to talk about preschool throughout the entire district.
And I'm Karen Weaver, I'm the Director of Early Childhood. And so I am the principal of three schools, Hanson, Sandville and Star's Early Learning. But I oversee all the preschools in the district.
So the first thing I want to mention, and a lot of people are kind of surprised by this as well too. But as a school district, our preschool offerings is actually birthed to about age five. And so, yes, we do serve infants in our school district, which is a bit of a surprise, because many people think that preschool starts at about age four. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that preschool programming as well too. So our current numbers this year is that we serve about almost 600 students in preschool at Adams 14 School District. Those, uh, students are kind of a mix of general education students and students with a disability. Under the Individuals with Disability Education Act, it is our child find obligation to actually look for children in the community that have a disability, which means we start at birth. And then, once they turn three years old, we're obligated to provide services for them. Um, and we provide services through our preschool programming. So as you can see, we have, we call CPP E-Care students, but they really are general education students. And then about another 90 so students that qualify for services under the Individuals with Disability Education Act. We are pretty much a self-sustaining when it comes to funding within our preschool. At this particular time, we're not really tapping into general funds in order to run the preschool programming throughout the district. So where does our funding come from? So the state of Colorado has a program called the Colorado Preschool Program. And then that is supplemented with some additional funding through a project called E-Cares. So essentially, it is a per pupil funding that we would get for any student, but it's about half, because we provide half-day preschool programming for the most part. We do have a handful of full-day preschool programming. And then that CPP funding and that E-Care funding also helps to support kindergarten as well too. That's helping us to be able to provide a full-day kindergarten program in Adams 14. In addition to that, we get funding from the Special Education Department at CDE. We call this the Exceptional Children's Education Act. And since we are obligated to provide services for students with a disability, we receive additional funding to support that. And then we do receive a very small amount of funding for tuition, primarily for some of our families that attend full-day programming. Is there anything you want to add?
I just want to say the tuition piece is only at Star's Early Learning. And that's something we're looking into is how to expand. I've had a lot of parents at Hanson ask me if we could provide full-day funding for preschoolers there. And so we're kind of exploring that right now.
Um, so where are our early childhood classroom centers? We do have two standalone sites, that is the Star's Early Learning Center and Sandville Preschool. And then we have Hanson Elementary School. So right now, our schools that are in the northern part of the city, they do not have the capacity to be able to hold their own preschool program. So those kids are bussed into Hanson where there is extra, extra classrooms and slots for preschool there. And then in addition to that, three of our schools in the southern part of Adams County, Rose Hill, Kemp and Central have two preschool classrooms each in each one of their buildings. And then we do work with Head Start, and so we support Head Start in some of the slots that we use some of our funding for. And then we also support Little Giants. It's actually a requirement with the Colorado Preschool Project that we are partnering with private preschools that are licensed so that we can utilize them as a part of our bigger picture for how we support preschool throughout all of Commerce City.
And then, um, just, just as far as Little Giants go and Head Start, we have to do an RFP every other year to see what early childhood centers are out there that are licensed. And in Commerce City, there's very limited amount. And so we basically contract with the providers that are out there.
And we want to make sure that those providers are high-quality and licensed as well too. So there may be other providers, but they may not necessarily meet the rigors of being a high-quality program. One other thing I want to note and point out to you, Head Start is going through some changes nationally. I would kind of joke, because they actually have a thousand rules and regulations that they must follow in order to run a Head Start program. And one of the things that they will more than likely be doing next year is converting all their half-day classrooms into full-day classrooms. Um, and so that means they're only going to be able to serve half as many students as they are currently serving right now. Because when you have two half-day programs, that is 30-plus students that you serve. But when you only have a full-day program, that reduces it down to 18. So we anticipate that we will be taking on more students. And so in preparation for that, we are going to increase one classroom at Hanson to be prepared for taking on additional students because of the potential changes that might start with Head Start. I think preschool is a good little place to figure out any potential changes that may be happening in Adams 14 School District, because these are the kiddos that are going to eventually become our school age population. So we thought it'd be very interesting to talk a little bit about the diversity within our preschoolers that are currently attending Adams 14. So this gives you an idea of all of the languages that are currently spoken by preschoolers within Adams 14 School District. We are also very proud at the high quality of the caliber of the teachers that we have. So one of the things that I like to point out is when I first came into Adams 14 School District, I was extremely impressed with the preschool model that we currently have. A majority of our preschool teachers have dual certification. Not only do they have a early childhood, um, teaching credentials, but many of them also have an early childhood special education teaching credentials. And we have a 100% fully-inclusive preschool program in Adams 14 School District, something that we should be very, very proud of. And a majority of our students are being taught by a teacher that not only understands early childhood education, but they really understand differentiation and those advanced pedagogy or art of teaching techniques that, um, our students would benefit from. And I think because of the high quality of the caliber of the teachers that we have, our students are actually performing extremely well at state measures. So a lot of people are surprised that even in our preschool, they have to take a test. But fortunately, the test is not as rigorous as the PARC assessment is. It is a, a assessment tool that we use called Teaching Strategies Gold. And it really is about doing observations of the students and filling in this data. And that that data is turned into the state. And consistently over the last three years, our preschoolers have actually been performing at or above the average at the state level as the results coming back from that TS Gold. And I have to say that a lot of that has to do with the high-caliber teachers that we have invested in here in Adams 14 School District. In addition to that, I do want to point out our 24 paraprofessionals. And I want to point out that a lot of times our families, when they're requesting a classroom, they're requesting a certain paraprofessional, because that paraprofessional might have been their paraprofessional when they were in preschool, or their grandchildren as well too. And a majority of our paraprofessioners are, paraprofessionals are bilingual. And one of the projects that I want to work in over the next couple of years is this paraprofessional-to-teacher pipeline. How can we support these paraprofessionals who oftentimes live right here in the community to actually become teachers and preschool teachers eventually within the system as well too?
And to add to that, our paraprofessionals also, as our teachers, go through constant professional development. And one of the state requirements for licensing is that paraprofessionals have two, um, um, community college classes that they have to take. And so we are constantly working with the Early Child, Childcare Council of Adams County to help find funding to help send these teachers to school.
Um, some successes that we've had over the past, um, a couple of years. We have started to expand the biliteracy programming into the preschool level. So during this past year, it was our first year where we actually offered two preschool classrooms, two half-day classrooms, right? So they had morning and afternoon that followed the biliteracy approach. Therefore, these students are getting prepared to go into a biliteracy classroom in kindergarten. And we are looking to expand that to a third site this year as well too, possibly four as well too. I, I think Adams 14 received some recent really positive press about starting to do home visits at the school age level. But at the preschool level, we've been doing this for quite some time. And so a part of the work that our teachers and paraprofessionals do at the very beginning of the year is actually visit every child's home, get to know that home environment and get to know that family. And I've already talked about the Teaching Gold strategies and the success that we've had. And then in addition to that, one of the things that you're going to hear me talking a lot about overseeing mental health is the importance for social emotional learning. And over this next upcoming year, we're going to be really hitting this very hard throughout the entire district. And how do we provide direct, explicit, systematic, social emotional learning to all of our students? Because the research shows that we can increase 11 points by actually teaching students social emotional skills. But once again, bragging on the preschool, they've been doing this for quite some time. And the program that they utilize is a social emotional learning curriculum called Incredible Years. And one of the most fascinating thing about the Incredible Years is the parent education that occurs. And so we offer classes throughout the years that actually help the parents with some of their parenting skills. And we received some pretty positive press through Chalk Beat Colorado recently, where they highlighted the Incredible Years program and our specific work that we are doing here in Adams 14 School District. Um, and then, of course, professional development is very critical. They've received quite a bit of professional development this year around the Incredible Years. We have a partnership with CDE to support our culturally responsive practices through the Puente's Culturalales. They've also received some training on content language objectives as the rest of the district has. And then also some specific training on STEAM teaching. How do we teach science, technology, engineering, arts and math at that preschool level? And so they went through some particular training called Raft. I don't know if you want to add anything else to that.
So Raft is a resource place that you can go and they have all kinds of stuff that you can use to make STEAM activities. And so we went there this year with the teachers. I think they went last year too, but it's a, it's a great experience for all.
Great. So that's our opportunity to kind of share with you some of the successes and the overview of the preschool programming that we have in Adams 14 School District. Are there any questions that you guys have for us?
Karen, I was impressed when you and I met here a couple of months ago on the walk-through.
Karen, I was impressed when you and I met here a couple months ago on the walk-through. And I just want to say you guys have done a fantastic job. With the new kids that you are anticipating next year, do we have, do you have enough funding to take care of those kids?
Yeah, I hope so. You know, I think we have enough funding to get through the year. Do we have enough funding to do everything that we want to do? You know, I think that that's, we have to sit down and think about our priorities and decide what we want to do.
Have you done that yet for next year's budget?
We have. We started working on it. We haven't finished the budget yet. You know, I'm hoping in the next two weeks, we'll have a better picture.
And my second question is, do you guys have enough materials and everything you need in the preschool classrooms?
So I think we definitely could use more.
Like?
Well, I think, for example, the school district that I came from before, we had a lot of like blocks and really high-quality blocks. And we do have blocks in the preschool, but not as many as I think we could have to help build spatial concepts with children, puzzles, you know. I think it's, I think when you look at all the schools across the district, it's, there is some inequity going on, you know? Like, if you walk in one school, maybe the puzzles have missing pieces, and we want to have those replaced. And so that's one thing that my coaches and I are really working closely on this year is looking at what are, what do we have and what do we need to replace? As we open another classroom, that's a huge issue because it typically costs about $10,000 to open a preschool classroom, and that's, no, we don't have that in the budget.
And I might add on as well, too. When you're working with these little kids, we have to do something that we call pre-operational teaching, which means hands-on, real objects that we're interacting with. And we definitely want to begin exploring more work around play-based learning and additional work around science, technology, engineering, and math. And that means we need things. We need things to be able to interact with, be able to play with. As the individual who's helping to supervise the program, this has not gone unheard, and there are some very specific things that we are working on. Just so you know, you approved for us to be able to apply for a tiered intervention grant. I wrote that tiered intervention grant, working together with Ms. Borgos and Sheila Burke as well, too. But the model that we chose for that is an early learning model focusing on Hanson. And if we were to get it, then we will have a big infusion of supports and supplies and materials and professional development that we need. In addition to that, we're working on a playground grant. We need to upgrade the playgrounds for all of our preschool students. And so we have an opportunity through Colorado Shines as well as through the Healthy Kids Initiative in Colorado to receive some funding to upgrade our playgrounds for our preschool students.
So you have applied for those grants already?
The TIG grant, we have already applied for, and we hope to hear at the end of April, the playground grants. I'm just now beginning to explore what it is, and probably at the next board meeting, you're going to approve if we are able to apply for that grant.
Another thing I wanted to mention, too, when we talk about preschool, you know, we have little wooden kitchens and such. And as I walk around to the different schools in the district, they do seem to be falling apart. So I think we need to talk about replacement budget. And again, we get, you know, we all know that Colorado does not provide a lot of funding with PPR. And so we get half of PPR for our students. And so, yeah, to buy equipment gets more challenging.
If I can make a request, when you sit down with Dr. Jay, if you can add those items into your budget. I mean, I know it's probably going to be a little over, so we can take a look at it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Moving on to routine items, personnel. Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for personnel action.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Here and now, grab roll call, Monica, please.
Aye.
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 Moving on to next item, business. 1.0 Grants 1-1 Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to accept grant funding from the Turnaround Network Grant from the Colorado Department of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Here and now, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.2 Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to apply to the Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness to Ungraduate Programs Gear Up Grant through the Colorado Department of Higher Education.
So moved.
Is there a discussion? Here and now, can we have roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 2.0 Other Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with the Tennyson Center to provide educational and therapeutic intervention to students with significant emotion disabilities.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Here and now, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 2.2 Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with, let's make that one.
Dubrow.
Dubrow.
Deveraux.
Glick Wallace Center to provide educational and therapeutic intervention for students with significant emotional disabilities.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Here and now, can we have roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 3 Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with the Larrident School to provide educational therapeutic intervention for students with significant emotional and cognitive disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Here and now, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to 2.4 Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to the state overnight travel to Keystone, Colorado for the trans leadership conference on June 8th through 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Here and now, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on, 2.6 was omitted, so now moving on to 2.7 Superintendent's Recommendation, I need a motion for approval to award requisition to the proposed RFP number 1617-145 to Colorado Mechanical System for HVAC Unit Replacement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Flip a coin.
Mr. Weber, according to the revised statute of the budget, HVAC only had $50,000, according to what I'm looking at right now. And this HVAC you're asking for is $85,800. What other budget is the $35,800 coming out of?
That is under the contingency budget.
Right here.
We have a contingency budget to help cover some of the unknown expenditures.
Right now, Mr. Weber, I'm looking at HVAC budget is $50,000. Right here is saying that it's $85,800. So shouldn't it say what other fund is coming out of?
It's coming out of the cap reserve budget. That's correct.
But you're going to have two different budgets you're taking that money out of.
I apologize. What's that?
You're going to be taking that money out of two budgets in the cap reserve. One is going to be HVAC for $50,000.
Correct.
So you're going to have $35,800. What other budget, what other funds is that one coming out of?
That is coming out of the cap reserve contingency fund, which is a reserve for unknown emergencies.
I'm sorry, I don't see that on here.
So usually put contingency in other capital expenditures.
Correct.
And that's what he's speaking.
But what I'm saying is, it's in capital reserve, so we got two different funds right here. So it's not showing which two funds is coming out.
It's, this is all cap reserve fund?
Correct.
There's two different line items, but we're going to make a budget transfer from the other, from the contingency.
Can you say it on the mic, please?
So, so it is, it is still the capital reserve fund, but they're different line items. So every year when we adopt a cap reserve under the other capital projects, there is a little bit set aside, usually around 100 and, depends on the year, 120, maybe 150, that is established as a contingency. In the event something breaks, a roof, a boiler, that you're not planning for. So in this case, we're going to need to move from the line item that's contingency, $35,000, up to the line item HVAC in order to make this required repair that's being brought forward. So that's, that's how that works and how that happens.
And my question to you, Ms. Rotella, is who's going to move that money?
Based on your approval, we'll move that from the one line item. It's all within the same fund. And so that's, I just make a budget transfer.
So, so if I'm not mistaken, you should be asking the board right now for us to approve to move that $35,800 to the HVAC from out of the capital expenditure account, correct?
No, there's no board policy that directs that because it's all in the same fund. It would be no different than if it goes from Allsup to the high school or the learning services department to Allsup. It's, it's an internal fund budget transfer from a project line labeled contingency to the project line labeled HVAC.
So, Dr. Brago, could you check board policy DBJ for me? Because it shows to me, if I'm not mistaken, money shall not be transferred from one fund to another unless authorized in advance by the board.
That's correct. And the fund, it's the word fund. Capital reserve is a fund, and it's the only fund.
Yes, but it says one fund to another. Dr. Brago, could you please check into this for me, please?
I'll do that.
Thank you. I'm out of questions.
So just to repeat, the transfer was within the same fund. So it's, it's not going from one fund to another fund. It's staying within the capital reserve fund. There's just a line item labeled contingency that's being moved to the HVAC line item account number, so.
And actually, that account you're speaking of doesn't say contingency. It says other capital expenditures.
That is correct, but there's a contingency in that.
You got to think, okay, thank you. Okay, is any further discussion? Here, you go ahead.
I just stand in here if there's any additional questions.
No, there's no other discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can we have roll call, Monica?
Nay.
Mr. Driving.
Nay.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rolla.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Nay.
Moving on to 2.8 Superintendent's.
If I could interrupt real quick, I think it's critical that I address the board that they understand the purpose of this purchase is to protect the $400,000 that's going to be invested into the district server room. So this is part of that repair. And so I urge you to reconsider the vote tonight and to address that. In order for us to have this equipment in in a timely manner to address the $400,000 investment that you're planning on putting in the infrastructure of IT, we need to address this tonight.
I'm sorry, Dr. Brago, if this is for IT, this should come under IT and not, it's just saying mechanical. So my suggestion is that we voted no for this right here. So they need to come back to the board with a different proposal, superintendent recommendation. That's my recommendation.
So Mr. Thomas, if I may?
Yes, please.
The recommendation is for the air conditioning unit that cools the current server room. So while Mr. Weber is correct that it will protect our future investment, it's actually protecting our current investment. And the temperature in that room is increasing every day as spring turns to summer. Our first 90-degree day, that room will overheat, and we will be shutting down all the functions that Brandon described earlier because they sit on those servers that run in that room. This is a maintenance request because IT does not cover air conditioning. But the room where the air conditioning is going to go is protecting IT infrastructure. So it is correct that it does fall under maintenance, and the maintenance department under Mr. Weber did the RFP to find the appropriate repair. But it does go into the room where the servers are. It would be the same as them doing a repair on an air conditioning in a school. We wouldn't have the principal write the superintendent's rec. We would have maintenance write it. Does that help clarify, sir?
It clarified, but it should still came out of technology system budget.
The air conditioning unit is part of district maintenance. It's not something that IT services. It's like any other room where air conditioning flows or functions. There's not a budget anywhere or any funds under IT that support air conditioning, but the budgets that IT does support are for those servers that have the infrastructure running on them. Everything from our student information system that schools need to take attendance and do grades on a daily basis, as well as many of the other functions that are necessary. And I'm very concerned that as the weather warms up and we don't have this air conditioning unit replaced or fixed, whatever that RFP is doing, that we will overheat in that room. And there is no other backup. We're already keeping it cool as much as possible.
And if I remember right, years ago, that did happen.
Yes, it did, and.
We upgraded to what it is now.
Mm-hmm. And we've flooded in that room before. It's just the nature of this particular building. We do what we can with what we have. I think we've kept the floodwaters out of there, but this air conditioning unit is critical.
Any other questions? Okay, I guess we'll have to have a consensus to reconsider the vote.
If I may address as well, the equipment is a four-to-six-week lead time. So I just want to assure the board of that lead time in order to get that equipment ordered in a timely manner so you choose to move forward.
Okay, need a consensus there to reconsider the previous vote?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with revoting?
I, I'm still concerned about the transfer of funds is the only thing I'm concerned about.
Well, my understanding, correct me because I'm not a finance guy, but my understanding is if you have money in this fund, you can use that same fund to move it over. You just can't jump from one fund to the other. So in other words, what I'm saying, if you have athletics and you have funds to buy balls, as long as you're using that. as long as you're using that same athletic fund to purchase those balls, then you're, you're okay. You can't take from another fund and come, take money out of there to come and purchase something else. Right or wrong?
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's what they're saying, is they're, they're not taking money from other funds or transferring money from other funds to occupy that. It's right, it's already been set there in that same fund, so. I don't know if that helps you, Joe, or not.
Like you have the capital reserve, and that works for the whole district. Things that are coming up, they're projecting. But you also have the capital contingency, where in case something more, you need some more money, it's in the same air group, and you put it there. It's not, it's not like when I was doing it. If I ordered books for the ILC, but I didn't have enough money, I would have to fill out a form to go to another, uh, category. Do, you know what I'm saying? And then it would have to be approved. But I couldn't just go, you know, as long as it was in the same computer type area, they're going in the mechanical. And, and we did have that go down once before, till we upgraded to what it is. And with the more, uh, computers and the technology, it's gonna get a lot hotter in that room.
And I, I will check that for you, Mr. Uh, Thomas. But I'm, I'm ninety percent sure that if long as you stay within the same fund, you're okay. But my biggest concern is we just approved a four hundred thousand dollar investment for the district. Well, we didn't approve it, I'm sorry, but we're thinking about approving a four, fund of four hundred thousand dollar investment for all this technology, but everywhere I've gone, you know that in order to protect your technology, you always ask, where is it located? Because it has to be in a cool room. And if we, you know, I mean, this is a, an important component for us to not to lose all that. So I think that's the bigger picture.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, what was your yes, no, and consensus?
Consent.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now we have the consensus to re, there, so I need a motion to re-vote on this two-point, uh, eight.
Two-point seven.
Or two-point seven?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Hearing now, can I roll call Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, moving on to point eight, superintendent's recommendation. I, I need a motion for the approval to purchase HP hardware, associated software to replace current hypervie server and storage. Is there, is there?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I, I have a question for Teresa. Is four hundred thousand gonna be enough, or are we gonna have you back in front of us in two months saying that you need another hundred thousand?
Nope, four hundred thousand is enough. And I was going to bring the prior presentations that I had done dating back to May tenth of two thousand sixteen to show that we'd started pricing these pieces out. In the superintendent's recommendation, we asked to go not to exceed four hundred thousand, because as Brandon mentioned earlier, we have those two pieces that we're still back and forth with the vendor on the exact pricing. This is it. We've done competitive pricing across multiple vendors with the support of the procurement department. Uh, we're ready to go.
Okay.
Any other? Can I roll call Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to two-point nine, superintendent's recommendation. Any motion for the approval of the calendar change to school closure due to water main break at Stars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing now, can I roll call Monica? Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to section four, communication. You skipped what?
Two-point five.
Two-point five?
Overnight to Breckinridge.
I checked it out.
Overnight to Breckinridge.
No, I thought I did that one.
I checked it out.
So did I.
Yeah, I would get that, but we'll do it again a few things. Uh, I need a motion for the approval to, for in-state overnight travel to Breckinridge, Colorado for the Midwest Educational Learning Conference on June twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing now, can I roll call Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye. All right, moving into communication. Dr. Brago, is anything you'd like to communicate?
Uh, yes, the most important thing is we're trying to, uh, learn as much as we can about the budget. We're trying to have some meetings with the board. So at this time, uh, we're requesting some dates where the board could get together and conduct at least three workshops on the budget that will help you so that when we come down to June thirtieth, you'll have all the necessary information, and you'll understand the procedures, so we can, uh, have that balanced budget. So we're asking for some dates so we can do some, uh, work-study sessions with the board.
Uh, I would like to just mention that we had a workshop, work-study there with Casby Friday. And one of the interesting things that the board will have to come decision is that, uh, there's times that we have to do some kind of work-study, and we have come to a conclusion that maybe, at that time, maybe have one meeting for that month, and then use the second meeting to do a work-study. And I know that's something we could be thinking about, and maybe on the next, uh, meeting, we'll bring it up and see what your consenses are on that, because I know there's a lot of times we have to communicate on certain things, and a lot of times we all can't make it, we're so, we're such busy people. You know, my, uh, golf game keeps going down every time I miss a game. So I gotta make sure that I could do it at night when I can't play. So that's something to consider, that maybe, you know, here towards the end, that we just maybe meet, have a meeting once a month and, uh, and then have some kind of work-study, so that we're all present. Uh, I mean, think about it, and we'll put it on the agenda for next, next meeting. And maybe the last month or two could be something we could experiment on, and then maybe carry it on a little bit once in a while. Because I think the law only requires one meeting a month. And so we would not be in contempt of, uh, so that was something else. And, uh, um, Mr. Black came up with some good ideas that we could talk about to, uh, think to help us become a better board and become a better district. And one of the things that we talked about was debriefing, discussing what we're doing. If we had that, then we could do it, so. Does anybody else have anything to communicate?
Are you done? Um, I see here we have something here, uh, for the foundation.
Oh, yeah, I forgot all about that.
That's a fourteener.
Yeah, fourteener. Um, the Adams Fourteen Education Foundation will be held on Thursday, April twentieth, from six to nine PM at, uh, Belcher Vineyards. In the past, the board has, uh, sponsored a monument Princeton sponsorship level. What are the wishes of the board? And I don't know, what is it, Monica, like fifteen hundred dollars?
Five thousand.
What is it?
Five thousand.
Oh, God, I really missed him.
So. This is a scholarship fund for the district, is that correct?
Yeah.
I, I was just, I mean, I have no problem going up to ten thousand, it's for our kids.
So. Any other comments? Ten thousand, I don't know, that's a.
Uh, board president?
What's that?
It comes from the board's budget.
Comes from our budget. Do we have ten thousand in our budget?
No.
We don't?
So that went out the door?
No.
Do we have five thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so five would be, there, is that fine, yes, no?
Fine with me.
Harvest, how do you feel?
I'm good with that.
Connie?
Good.
Joe? Good, okay, I'm good with it too. Is there anything else that was on there, communications?
They're listed first.
On the second page. The board has expressed concerns and questions regarding the budget, and in order to continue communications in the process moving forward, there is a need to schedule a board budget study session. And that goes back to what I was just mentioning, that we could use one of those.
Meetings.
Tuesdays?
Tuesdays to have a study session. So I don't, do we wanna go with that, uh, right away? Or do, I, I don't know, I'm not a man of the budget, but. Well, we'd like to s- schedule that, because once again, it's hard, I know, especially if you're working there and.
We can do it after our board meeting, like you suggested, and we, if we can shorten our board.
Yeah, we can shorten the board where we don't have individuals come in and talk, where we just get to the policies that we need, and then, so we want to do that next, the next meeting?
I can't promise the next big meeting being shorter, because we already have, um, Metro scheduled to come in and give, uh, OCR survey results, um, in a public forum. And so, that's, that's not gonna be a short presentation.
Well, how long is that presentation, Monica, do you know?
Um.
Thirty minutes.
It's.
It's a hundred and fifteen pages, so I'm sure it's gonna be pretty long.
Okay. All right, then, uh, I don't know what we wanna do then. Uh, we'll, we'll have to set a date when we all can make it, because we have to finalize the budget by the end of June, correct?
How about next Tuesday night?
Next Tuesday night? Next Tuesday night?
Um, Tuesday night, Tuesday night. No, I can't do Tuesday night. What time?
We could do it.
What time?
What time?
What time, I mean?
Evening time?
It'd have to be in the evening, but it's probably, I'll be honest, six-thirty or seven, because I could be having a baseball game. And right now, we're nine and two, so I'm not gonna jeopardize.
I'm okay with the eighteenth.
Okay with next Tuesday? Okay, what time, six-thirty, normal board time? Okay, and if I'm, if I'm a little late, you can handle it.
You better be.
So, okay, so we'll have a, Monica, can we have it posted that there'll be a, uh, steady session or a board meeting next week for the discussion of the budget? Okay, the Commerce City Historical Society annual, from time to time luncheon is scheduled for Sunday, May seventh, at twelve PM at the Yellow, Yellow Rose Event Center. Does the board wish to purchase tickets for a table at the event? Tickets are twenty-five dollars per person.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Last year we purchased them, and it was just Monica, I, and Guadalupe there. Nobody else showed up.
I think Harvest was there.
This year? You went through last year.
Last year, he was.
So, well, that's a good point, Connie, because, you know, instead of spending.
Right.
A hundred and fifty dollars, we spent, well, three hundred, whatever, we spent only. So if we commit, we have to show up. And it's, uh, where is the Yellow Rose Event Center?
It's right there in Derby.
Okay.
What's that one?
Where the old, the old flower shop used to be.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thought that was a nightclub.
No.
No, it's a event center now.
Okay. So.
What's the date?
May seventh.
Seventh, at twelve-thirty AM.
Is that just for board, or does that include spouse?
It always includes a spouse.
With the spouse.
So it's twenty-five dollars?
Per person.
Per person, so it's fifty dollars for a couple, which leaves me out, so.
You could use an individual.
All right, so consensus? Consensus there?
I, I'm not, I won't go, but I'll support it.
What's that?
I'll support it, but I won't be there. My birthday, that's Monday, I'm going fishing.
Your birthday?
My birthday is Monday, so I'm going fishing.
Monday.
The eighth.
So, how old?
Uh, young fifty-three.
Good for you.
I wish I was fifty-three, so.
All right, so Harvest supports it, but there's no sense purchasing Harvest a ticket. Connie? Larry going?
I'll say yes.
Okay, so we need two for Connie.
He's not saying, he's not here to say no, so.
Uh, yeah, I'll make it.
Okay, just you or your spouse?
Me and Ernestine.
Okay, two for Timmy. None, okay, and one for me.
What about you?
And Dr. Brago? One or fifteen?
What about Monica?
Monica? Or is there anybody else that wants to go on that day, just see Monica? Just talk to Monica.
Should we approve a, a amount, up to a certain amount for the purchase ticket?
I don't, uh, it's, if you wanna do that, you mean?
It could.
Should be a table.
Yeah.
Which, how much is a table?
Ten of us, to be two-fifty.
They don't sell by table, it's a.
Well, we could do like.
Could do ten?
Ten.
Cause that means there'll be what? One, two, four, six. So that means only four people will be allowed? So if we do ten?
Two, four.
And Dr. Brago, my spouse, six. And Monica, seven.
You and your spouse?
So.
Do you want me just to purchase tickets to fill a table?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other communication?
I, I have a couple of things. Do we have anybody in here, uh, from our transportation unit?
No.
No? A couple of weeks ago, we approved a trip for our baseball team. We got in Trinidad for a baseball tournament.
Yeah.
And they never made it. So I'd like to know if the money was refunded, and why we even sent a bus down there to begin with and endanger our kids when we already knew that the roads were closed down south.
Well, you didn't send them down, Joe, that they got as far as, uh, Castle Rock, and then they were told that they could no longer get past, uh, Walsenburg to Raton Pass.
Right, but we, we already knew it was closed way before then.
Oh, I don't, that I don't know.
So, uh, the second thing I wanna bring up is the retirement dinner was very nice, and I'd like to thank everyone who, um, had a hand in that. It was very nice the other night. Um, is Johnny here? Go on up. Couple of things. Mr. Thompson, what do you oversee?
Operations, maintenance, transportation, um, nutrition.
Okay, can you please see to it that this week our flags outside our building here get replaced? They're all tattered and torn and faded, and it's a disgrace. Same thing. Um, we did a building walkthrough here, a few of our board members here a few weeks ago, and I gotta tell you something, it was, um, I don't think any of us were very happy on the, how clean they were and the upkeep of these buildings, especially the high school. Um, you oversee this area?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any training for our building engineers? Are they certified to sweep? Because the floors didn't look good, there were stains on the carpet, things had to be patched, it was filthy.
Yeah, so, um, currently, uh, over spring break, I did a thorough walkthrough of all the schools. And, um, going through all the paperwork and seeing is there a standardized, um, method for cleaning within the district? And if anybody has signed off on those, knowing that they've been trained and know that they know that they're responsible for certain, um, things, and that's some documents I'm currently putting together.
Our kids are walking in these schools.
Absolutely.
And we opened a closet, I believe we're at Allsup, and it's never even been swept in there.
Yeah, so, um, I assumed my position January second, and, um, I've started already doing my walkthroughs. I've got a laundry list of items that need to be, um, addressed, along with energy concerns. And so, um, as soon as I get that document put together in Excel form, um, we're gonna start putting together a, a timeframe in which these things are gonna get done and completed.
Can we get an update on the mail that fell through the roof at Kearney?
Yeah, well, it's kind of over-exaggerated about what occurred. As soon as I heard that the gentleman came through the roof, I went over there immediately. And what occurred was, they had removed a vent off the roof, and he had stepped back and slipped a little bit through, and so instead of pulling it back out, they lowered it back down, and he went around and came back up, and they covered it.
There's one thing, as a board member, we never got any follow-up on that.
I submitted what occurred.
Um, same thing. Can you give us an update on our preschool that's closed?
Yeah.
And what happened?
They start school tomorrow. We were waiting on the contractor to finish the punch list that was required for the daycare to get approved by the state for their inspection. And so we had a crew over there on Friday, and there were some things that the, the company didn't quite get completed, and we completed them ourselves.
Did you walk it yourself?
What's that?
You walked it yourself?
Yes, I was over there every day myself.
Did you sign off on it?
On the inspection? I can't sign off on the inspection, it's the state that signs off.
Okay, 'cause my question is, did we find asbestos during that time in mold?
No, I have that reported in my office.
We did not find it?
No.
Or we did?
No, we did not find any asbestos or mold.
Okay, do you hold any certifications in those areas?
Do I hold? No, I got a certified document that says that there is no asbestos or mold.
And where I'm getting at is, you're over maintenance, is that correct?
Correct.
You don't hold any certifications, and our district has filled us asbestos. Who holds certifications to ensure the safety of our kids and our staff when something like this happens, or we have to make a hole in a wall, if you don't hold any certifications and expertise in this area? Who does?
Do we have anybody who holds expertise in that area? Is there a certified document?
Yeah, we have people that are inherently trained in the maintenance staff. They're, they're currently coming up on their two-year renewal.
Okay, but you currently are not?
No.
Okay. Um, that's all I have for you, Mr. Thompson, thinking. We're getting a lot of emails from Monica, which I feel should be coming from Jasmine, and I don't know why we're getting more emails about stuff that's happening in the district from Monica than our own communications person.
I'm sorry, I'm not following you, Mr. Jasmine.
We're getting more emails from Monica than our own communications person that's supposed to be giving us emails about district stuff.
All I do is, I, we have a protocol that we inform Monica, and then the information gets distributed.
Okay, Joe, on that one, I believe the board had asked Monica to send us the emails on certain items there.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question for you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Um, in the revised budget that was approved from this board on January twenty-fourth, there is a ten thousand dollar playground equipment. So if the preschool is standing in front of us, asking about playground and equipment, and it's ten thousand in here, I think that should be getting taken care of as soon as possible. And I'm not sure who looks at the revised budget, because it has sixty-two thousand, sixty-one thousand dollars in here. And on August the ninth, which you say you took your position on January two thousand seventeen, this board approved for security cameras and equipment, and it was twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars. I'm not sure, you might not know, but that's where, that's it there. So if the board approved for that, security cameras back in August, I'm trying to figure out, how is it that we got cameras not working? That's something for you and your staff to work on.
Absolutely.
I'd like a follow-up with that, because I looked on the, and couldn't find it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
If I may, I addressed that in the last meeting, and what that was is, our internal staff is currently working on the access system first. They, they have two buildings left, and then they will go into the closed circuit TV, and those are just additions to the cameras that are currently in place. That's not a total replacement. At that time, you had asked for a district-wide camera replacement cost. I shared the, that information with the board. I believe it was over a half a million dollars.
Um, Dr. Bregel, I'm gonna give you this, August the ninth.
Okay, that's good.
And, um, the company was surveillance video, and we were sent December the thirteenth, the board was, the contracts, I couldn't find video surveillance on there, or surveillance video, and the board approved twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars to purchase security camera equipment. So I'd just like to get the follow-up for the board, and I'll send you what we have, but I'm just saying, we getting things come to us, and we approve them, and there's no follow-up. Maybe it's our fault, but we shouldn't have to have our fault, because we trusting that from this diocese, things is getting done. And even though it was August the ninth that we approved it, and then we get presentations in April about district-wide security cameras, it's a hundred and twenty thousand. It's here, a presentation in April. So, and then we approved twenty-seven. Now, each time we look up, there's something else that the revised budget's saying there's sixty-one thousand, two hundred. So I'm trying, I'm, myself, I'm not speaking for the other board members. How is it that things is not coming back to us in a timely fashion, as far as things that's supposed to be done now? I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, going back now to communication, I wanna go general. I know we sit here, I've, I've been on the board, I don't know what, now, five, six years, and my communications has always been, we wanna leave this board with some positive and not negative. So in the future, if you have, if the board has questions to individuals, you can write, you can call, what's your name? Connie? Or you can call me, or you can call Monica, or Dr. Bregel, and we make sure that we'll put it under discussion in the future, because we wanna leave it in a positive manner. You know, now we're gonna go here, and we have to go enjoy Easter, and go look for eggs, and we're all negative, we're all burned out, and all that. Don't wanna do that. So in the future, gentlemen, madam, if we have questions to ask certain individuals, let's do it under discussion, and please call myself, Connie, Monica, or Dr. Bregel, and we'll put it, we'll gladly put it on the agenda.
Well, I'm gonna end in a positive, and I wanna thank the parents for coming in, and I encourage you to spread the word. If you can't come in, call Dr. Bregel or Monica Vina, and let us know.
Well, and I'll say something else. I wanna thank Scott and his maintenance crew for all the hard work they did to get our school back in order, and then I know the work order's probably stacked up, but there's, these guys keep it on their spring break, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That was with the preschool flooding, and Saturday, prior to that event, we had a flood at Central Elementary Module, that was modular building that we were dealing with on top of the Stars flooding.
So if you can convey that to your, your staff?
I will share that, thank you.
Also, Scott there, I did go to the first Adam City baseball game. Field looked great. Not as good as Skyview's, but it looked good, okay? All right, good job. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Or, yeah, any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drilling?
Aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned at eight-thirty, and be done, we finally beat nine o'clock.
I'm on the clock for eight.